One minute.
Hi, Rochelle.
Is he okay?
Oh, I didn't talk. I was talking to him.
Patty, we will ask the city clerk to call the meeting to order and do roll call.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Denise Delmar.
Here.
Mayor Protam John Harabedian.
Here.
Councilmember Rochelle Arizmendi.
Present.
Councilmember John Kapocha.
Here.
Councilmember Jean Gosh.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum and may conduct city business.
Thank you. Councilmember Rochelle Arizmendi will give our Pledge of Allegiance an inspiration for the evening.
If we can all please stand and put your hand over your hearts and begin.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Let's have a short thing to read here. On February 28, 1980, President Jimmy Carter wrote, "From the first settlers who came to our shores, from the first American Indian families who befriended them, men and women who have worked together to build this nation. Too often the women were unsung and sometimes their contributions went unnoticed." So these words were part of his message establishing the first Women's History Week in 1980 and marked the beginning of a new chapter in American history, one in which recognition of women and their work and the promotion of their rights became a more explicit concern. That initial effort has expanded, and it was expanded in 1987, and March is now designated as Women's History Month. So happy Women's History Month, and in recognition of that, we're looking forward to those of you who are available on Thursday this week. Assemblymember Chris Holden will be recognizing our Sierra Madre resident, Nancy Schollenberger, for her service over the last 32 years as our city clerk. So happy Women's National Women's History Month. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes? Any other council would like to make to the agenda?
No changes.
Can I have a motion to pass?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I will now turn to the city attorney for the report out from the closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. There was no closed session, and so there is no report.
Thank you for that. Approval of our meeting minutes. These are our March 12th. Has everybody had an opportunity to review? Do you have any changes?
I just have one on page one. It says Mayor Protam Harabedian Delmar. So I think... Oh, it's okay.
I kind of paste it over.
Yeah, yeah. That was the only change I saw.
Do you not like the being included in my family? With that one change, can I have a motion to approve, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is our mayor and city council reports. Does any council member have a report?
Just real quick, I did go to see Tuesdays with Maury at the Playhouse.
Oh, good.
Absolutely fantastic. So if you haven't been to the Playhouse for a while, please become a regular patron. You won't be disappointed. That's it.
Anybody else?
I don't have anything to report.
I'll report out. I just shared about Nancy Schollenberger. She'll be a woman of distinction for the city of Sierra Madre. So it'd be great if you can cheer her on on Thursday, and I'll be here at the district office for Holden. And also, yesterday, Maryvale recognized our treasurer. I don't know if he's here today, just for his work that he's done on the board of directors for Maryvale and their important work. So, council, we had presented him with certificate of recognition there. And then lastly, I just wanted to give a shout out to Chamber and all of the groups in Sierra Madre for an amazing Wisteria Festival. I think some of us were able to attend, but it was a great turnout. It was a beautiful day. Our bloom wasn't as beautiful as I think we've seen in past years. So, you know, it was hard to listen to folks that were lining up. And lines were long this year, but they were like, where are the flowers? And I thought, well, it's the rain. So we're thankful for the rain, but the bloom, I think here at City Hall is much more pronounced than it was at the bloom. But again, great turnout, and I just heard great things from folks and visitors that were walking through the festival. So congratulations and thank you to all the hard work for all the volunteers.
And I was just going to report out on the Wisteria Festival as well. Such a beautiful day. It was so gorgeous. Okay. And next on our agenda is public comment, and these are for items not on the agenda. If you don't know what's on the agenda, we have it in the back. Public comment is three minutes, and Mr. Carlson will be doing the timing with the little buzzer. And who do we have first?
Renee Casuta, Vista Circle Drive. And I'm a designer and I'm a professor of design. I also serve on the Natural Resources Commission. And those two parts of my life really have a beautiful union in the possibilities of Kirsten Court, a beautiful union for the city. And if we decide to do one of the trinkets that they've, their preliminary sketches propose in the park, it won't do anything to improve the usefulness of the park. But what would really improve it is eliminating the street Kirsten Court. And I know this is big, but let me tell you a little bit about what that could be. Yes, we would lose 19 parking spots, a number of which could be replaced on both Baldwin and Sierra Madre. And if the park came right up to the curb of the sidewalk, then all the water that used to go down the storm drains from the sidewalk and from the street would be gathered. The slope would gather it in the park. And the park would be feeding the trees and our aquifer. And by my calculations, there are about 17,000 square feet on the sidewalk and on the street that now is all runoff water, storm drain water. And this year alone, we've gotten 30 inches of rain, two and a half feet per square foot. That's about 45,000 cubic feet of water right there. Wouldn't our aquifer love that? Yes, it would. And I also, just as a reminder, I'm really tenacious. And for several years, I came to city council and urged the council to move our election day to National and State Election Day. And not because of me, but because of outside forces and you guys, that happened. And I'm tenacious, so I may keep coming.
Please do.
Okay. But I think it's, could be a really dazzling idea for the city.
Thank you, Renee.
Thank you, and Godspeed.
Hello. Good evening.
Hi. Debbie Ross at 297 West Carter. I would also like to address the Kirsten Court project and say just when it came to my attention, when I saw it in our local paper, the two design options, I noticed that it's creating a very cluttered space. And I do believe we should bring in more ideas. I was here when the old pepper tree was still here, and it created beautiful shade and it attracted people. It was natural. I personally disapprove of bringing in man-made structures. They don't last as long. They need maintenance, and I wouldn't naturally say that since I'm a contractor. I would usually encourage structures. But I think in a public space, we need to create an open welcoming space and not restrict it with a lot of structures. So I just invite the council to participate in how this project goes further because I really don't know the proper steps, but I wanted to at least bring my thoughts to this meeting.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening. Marguerite Schuster, 675 Mount Wilson Trail. We have a splendid dedicated planning commission that's been working very hard to do what I believe we want them to do, namely to preserve the special character of our town while also acknowledging legitimate uses of private property. A variety of recent incidents leads me to believe that the commission needs more help from our codes if they're to accomplish what we hope they will. Perhaps a few issues raised by recent events will help illustrate. One, houses with roof structures reaching the height limit for a two-story home, remembering that two-story homes must be reviewed by the planning commission, can escape review if they are only one story. This appears to be a perverse outcome that could be remedied if a lower height limit applying to all construction triggered review. Two, houses with narrower side yard setbacks than the code currently allows may extend these narrow setbacks when making additions to the home, and this practice is easily, especially easy to justify when neighboring homes have the narrower setbacks allowed under earlier codes. However, allowing such extensions relentlessly increases the crowded character of neighborhoods and potentially promotes an ever-increasing creep of small setbacks on the edges of older neighborhoods, justified by what the neighbors have. This problem could be solved if only infill of an established building outline were allowed rather than the overall increase of that outline. For instance, recent approval of infill of this sort at the Wisteria House seemed to bother no one. Three, large and sometimes very large houses are regularly justified by arguing that they fall within the upper third of the size of neighboring houses, not infrequently, within a very few houses of the very top of that distribution. This practice obviously promotes, over time, the mansionization process as the top third gets ever larger and smaller houses are replaced with maximally large ones. This problem could at least be alleviated if the suitability standard were changed to the bottom two-thirds or even the bottom three-fifths. Such a change wouldn't stop mansionization, but it might at least slow it down. Four, justification of houses clearly exceeding size limitations has to do with the exceptional excellence of design. I appreciate the motivation for this exception clause, but I worry that its subjective character is, shall we say, lawsuit bait. I don't have a suggestion here, but it does seem to me that it puts the planning commission in a very tight spot since saying concretely what exceptional excellence might look like sounds on the face of it like something of a contradiction in terms. Thus, we may be faced with a loophole that too many trucks can be driven through. In short, I hope the city council will consider giving more direct legislative help to its good planning commission and soon, as things seem to be slipping away from us. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wish I could talk about that. I'm Liza Kerrigan, 551 Alta Vista Drive. I also have recently joined the Community Service Commission, and I wanted to just mention Kirsten Court as well. I think that there's been a tremendous amount of time and energy put into the planning of it. I think there's some really lovely aspects to it. But I too feel that the large moves of a gazebo or a trellis on the site would obscure the heart and soul of the city of Sierra Madre. I am trained as an architect, and I do really respond to issues of space. And I think that if we built any kind of structure... There are two proposals. One is for a trellis. It's on the north side of Kirsten Court, which is not going to help with shade, which I'm told is the reason why it should be built, but it will only shade the cars that are beyond the sidewalk to the north. And the gazebo is where the pepper tree, which is the second proposal, would be... The gazebo would be located where the pepper tree was cut down. I think there's a beautiful spatial narrative coming off the highway, up a gorgeous tunnel of trees on Baldwin Avenue that opens up to the intersection of the town and Kirsten Court, and you feel like you've arrived and you really are in the center of Sierra Madre. If you build things, it's going to obscure that space and ruin a valuable character. Sierra Madre, I think you can provide shade by doing something, trees that are drought tolerant. There are many trees that are drought tolerant, and I think that wasn't considered. I don't know. That was the impression that I got. And as a city that is a gateway to the foothills, I think you should try and represent it with some natural shading. Thank you.
Hi, Barbara Lee. Also on Kirsten Court, since I've been born and raised here. I'm going to be funny. Nothing says small towns in Madre like a gazebo when you enter the town. Not so. I used to fight to say bring back the pepper trees. Originally, they were said to be historical, and someplace that got pushed to the side. For a long while, a lot of us talked about making Kirsten Court historical. But there's some fine print that keeps us from doing that. And it's not the delivery trucks because they park alongside of Kirsten Court. I love the pepper trees, and I know when Danny Osti used to volunteer and put the twinkling lights up in the seasons, it just really reminded me of this is Sierra Madre. So I've gotten up before, and I was brutally honest. I don't care to see a jungle gym or a lunch pergola or whatever for the kids that are skateboarding through town to sit in the middle. At one point, that was the electric car turnabout, the red table car. Do something that says historical or this is Sierra Madre. What, you know, even a Wisteria vine, something that draws us to this is Sierra Madre. Anyway, also briefly, I've been away. I'm going to change subjects. I need to start going to planning commissions, but I hadn't realized that they were having difficulty with the height coordinates since Orville Klein used to be called Mr. Height. I think he would have been up here already saying quite a bit about what changes might not be advantageous to the town. Thanks.
We've missed you. Welcome back.
Dear council, my name is Andrea Lynn at Mount Wilson Trail. I'm a current resident of Sierra Madre. Today is the very first political meeting I've ever attended in my life. Therefore, please forgive me if I do not already know all the standard protocols or of a political meeting and how to address the council appropriately. I would like to proceed without prejudice, if I may. This is going to be a very uncomfortable conversation, and I believe today is a very good first step forward in seeking the justice and the accountability that we have been pursuing for the short 10 months that we have been here. So I'm here today before you to make my case heard in public eyes about the prejudice and oppression we have been undergoing and enduring, both systematically, as well privately, and personally, as a new resident of Sierra Madre since May of 2018. In the short 10 months of residing here in Sierra Madre, we've been stolen from, casted, yowed at, screamed at, and basically waking up to our properties trashed constantly right at our doorstep. We have seen a police officer no less than 30, 40 times in such a short amount of time. This is already outrageous in itself. And what's worse, I was punched for the first time in my life, and the person in question is an 85-year-old lady who was an ex-realtor. The worst part of it is all is that we are told every single time by police that no crimes occurred against us on our property. And out of the 20-plus crimes against us, with most of it being vandalism and some occasions theft, we are denied police report every single time. So when violence broke out for the first time, finally, the first report was born. And another one finally took after about maybe a million emails. A second police report was born. April 4th is the private hearing at the DA's office of the accused, the person named June Davidson, to be prosecuted for the theft crime against us, which came from the second police report. However, this is not why I'm standing here before you. The reason I'm here is because I spent 10 months of my life, almost full-time, fighting this chaos, and it's been nothing but a nightmare. We're looking forward to move out of Sierra Madre, and that is a very sad truth because when we bought this house here, we had nothing but love and welcomes and cannot wait to meet our neighbors. Yesterday, as I pursue accountability from City Manager Gabrielle, unfortunately and shockingly, he told me to cease my quest for accountability or he would never have a meeting with me again. Baffled and shocked I was, I decided to participate in today's meeting as a last-minute decision. No matter how much you want to fit in and please everyone, this neighboring situation, it is total shock to us as a May 30 person here I've never experienced and never heard of in my life. Understanding that time is short, I plan to return to the next meeting and bring TV reporters along in order to have our story heard and to have accountability held honorably and responsibly. I have records of everything that I have spoken to you today, of every single word that I have mentioned to you, with cat numbers and police reports and pictures and video on my security camera. Even though the security camera footage was denied by the police officer yet again and again, I'll be more happy to bring forward such evidence. We're not asking anyone to like us here and or to fit into this new community, but we ask for professionalism.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you begin, you missed the accolades. We were saying how wonderful the Wisteria Festival is.
The traffic in town.
Yeah, so...
Made that left-hand turn.
Councilmember Arizmendi was saying I got a chance to go down there. Nice job for the Chamber.
Thank you. That's why I was up here. I'm Carol Canterbury. I'm at 46 Victoria Lane on the Chamber. And I just wanted to thank the city for allowing us to take over once again and make our festival. We probably, I honestly don't know how many... I don't have a set number of how many people actually came down on the street, but we were predicting about 6,000 to 7,000 people had shown up. It was also the hottest day of 2019, so it turned out very well. The vine is 125 years old, and the vine does what the vine wants to do. So when you walk through it, you could see the purple little buds showing, and they hadn't quite come out yet because we had 11 weeks of no sun, and that's what that vine needs, and a little bit of Lew Watanabe, too. But anyway, so if you drive by now, it's absolutely, it's amazing. It's probably the best I've seen in years, and it's just gorgeous right now, as is the City Hall one because a lot of people were walking over here, too. I thought they were coming to the car show, but they were coming to look at the vine. Anyway, so it worked out well. We had 94 paid vendors. 84 showed up. They, I don't know why the other 10 didn't. We had quite a few food trucks, and that worked out well. And the health department, everybody was happy. I think the police department was happy, and the fire department, I think, was happy. I think Gabe was happy. Good. And it really is fun. So, and yes, we're starting next week. We're going to pick a day, and so we'll have for 2020. It'll just take a year of planning, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you again. Good evening.
Hi. Good evening. Mayor Delmar, city council members. My name's Laurie Torres. I live on 441 Grove Street. And I am also here tonight as president of the Board of Education for Pasadena Unified and want to invite all of you and anybody who wishes to come to our State of the Schools speech, which will be next Thursday, April 4th, at Sierra Madre Middle School at 6:00. And it's the first time that I can remember that this speech has been delivered in Sierra Madre. That's one of the perks of being the board president, is you get to decide where that address is going to be held. So I want to encourage all of you to come. It should be a nice evening, and we get to show off our wonderful schools. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else who would like to address the council for items not on the agenda?
Good evening, council. Gary Hood, North Baldwin. And I just wanted to comment on Ms. Schuster's discussing property. Side yard setbacks need to be followed closely because if you have emergency response personnel trying to get to the backyard with a gurney, fire equipment, they need that five-foot setback so that they can get through. So I just wanted to comment that that's a safety factor that should be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have anybody else who would like to address the council? If not, I'll close public comment. Thank you all. Next item is a sad item. Our police chief, Joe Ortiz, is leaving us to go to South Pasadena. Their win is our loss. So we do have a certificate for you if you want to come down. And do I have any comments from the council?
I'll comment. Chief, it's been a pleasure, and thank you so much for your leadership and your service to this community. If there's one thing, two things, that I will remember fondly about you is that smiling face all the time. But two is really the relationships you've been able to develop with residents and people in the community. People know you by face. They're comfortable and familiar with you, and I think that says a lot about you as a person, but also as a person that it's at the head of our public safety. So thank you. We wish you good luck. You're not far. Keep your cell phone number, because I still have that. But wish you luck, and again, thank you for your service.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, again, thank you, Chief Ortiz. You know, thank you for sticking around during the tough times when we were losing our department and rebuilding it. And again, in the email I sent you, I just really appreciate what you did to rebuild the relationship with the citizens, as Councilmember Arizmendi said. And, you know, I'm really happy for you. You're going to a great little town, South Pasadena, and I know you'll do real well there, and the people will love you there as they do here. So thanks again for everything.
I'll add my voice to that. I wanted to just say that not only did you participate in the rebuilding of our police department, but we are now at full strength, and I think we're better than we ever have been, and I think you deserve a lot of the credit for that. I'm guessing that's one of the main reasons you're leaving. I think they saw... I'm guessing that's one of the main reasons you're leaving. I think they saw that in you at South Pass. So our loss is their gain, and I just wish you Godspeed, Chief.
Yeah, and you know, I'll just add, it's been a pleasure, and we're going to see you again. So you're not too far, and I think you're going to come back and visit. And I'll always miss you being on the motorcycle, leading the Sierra Madre 4th of July Parade. So, thanks for everything.
Yes.
This is a certificate of recognition, the City of Sierra Madre, in appreciation of your service to the community of Sierra Madre. Joe Ortiz, Sierra Madre Police Department, 2010 to 2019, presented this 26th day of March 2019 by the Sierra Madre City Council, Mayor Denise Delmar, Mayor Proton John Harabedian, Councilmembers Rochelle Arizmendi, John Capocet, and Gene Goss. And it's been a pleasure-
Thank you very much.
Keep in touch.
Thank you.
Do you have a say a few words?
Just a few words. Perfect. Where does time go? 2010, I got here. I came from a medium-sized agency to a tiny agency, learned not only to do more with less, but to pretty much do everything with nothing. Along the nine years, I've been very blessed to have been supported by the City Manager, the City Council, the residents, and the folks I work with. It has been a journey, and it's a better place now than when I got here. There were trying times along the way, but we stuck it out, and I think we're stronger because of it. So again, thank you for your support.
I'd like to add my two cents as a citizen of the Sierra Madre.
Okay.
This is a very nice man. I just, I worked with him as a volunteer and as a citizen, and I have to say that that really is a gem that we're losing right now. He's been very professional, and he has got the heart of the people, because he's coming from the right spot. And I just want to say, thank you so much for the experience of working with you. I enjoyed every minute of it, and I appreciate you very much. Thank you.
We're not doing public comment.
I wanted to make a comment on the Chief. Councilmembers, Mayor, my name is Steve Stafford. Chief, you've been an outstanding chief. You've done everything that needs to be done. You've got this city through some rough times, when you succeeded the previous chief. I appreciate all the time you spent talking to me, and I think you're going to go to a good city that you'll do an outstanding job there, and I just want to wish you the best. Thank you.
Anybody else would like to say? And the Chief will be here throughout the meeting, too, so you can talk to him afterwards. Next on our agenda is our action items for our consent calendar. Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have three items on consent today, or tonight. Consent Item 1A, Adoption of Resolution 19-08 of the City Council of the City of Sierra Madre, approving certain demands. Item 1B, Annual Housing Element Progress Report. And Item 1C, Consideration of Award of Construction Contract to Gentry Brothers, Inc. for construction of the fiscal year 2018 to 2019 Street Improvement Project Number ST81901 in an amount not to exceed $720,00100. That concludes the consent items.
Thank you. Do I have any questions from council on Items A, B, or C?
I have a question on C.
Okay.
It's great news, obviously, the numbers we're seeing here, and Gentry Brothers is the lowest bid. I'm kind of just curious. I shouldn't be looking a gift horse in the mouth, but how are they able to come down, be as low as they are? Do you have any idea what their secret is?
Yeah, we do a full spreadsheet on all the bids, and we look at it, and it's kind of, it's funny. You know, some will bid $10,000 to do traffic control, and some will bid $60,000 to do traffic control. There's no rhyme or reason on how they do their bids. We trust that they study the specifications, and they understand what the plans and specs are calling for.
Right. And you cited other cities that have used them successfully. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Items A, B, or C?
Just have a real quick one on B regarding the housing numbers. Looking at units constructed in low income, rental is zero, ownership is one, and total is six. Is that a mistake, or was there something left out?
These are actually a compilation of various tables from the number of spreadsheets that we have to enter data into. Actually, if I could put up another table, I think it makes it a little bit clearer in terms of really looking at more of a allocation across from the assignment from RENA to where we stand now. So essentially, this is the RENA allocation that was assigned to the city. As you can see, the total RENA number is 55 units. And as we progress through each of the various years, we are at 2018 currently. We've had a total of six units constructed, and remember, these are net new units. So if you have a demolition of an existing house and it's replaced with a house, that does not count toward our RENA allocation. The six units represent accessory dwelling units, or second dwelling units, which we do count towards our RENA numbers as allowed by our Certified Housing Element. So that's what we have done in this column. And as you can see, our total remaining balance to be built is 18. This big increase was due to the 77 units that was developed in 2015, which was part of the Kensington Project, which we reported at above moderate units. So today, we've had 100 units constructed since the allocation was assigned.
So we have 18 to go, and what is the timeframe to complete those 18?
So basically, that was for the timeframe through 2021. But as you know, we are also entering the sixth cycle of the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, and those numbers are likely to go up.
Yes.
And we will have to accommodate that or account for that also with our updated Housing Element, which will probably begin in 2020.
Okay, the Governor has been making some noise about trying to do more to enforce this.
Yes.
Do I have that right?
That's correct.
So do we have any, do we know anything about what he's proposed, or what penalties there will be for not meeting the numbers?
Well, as you're aware, the Governor has filed lawsuits against some of the cities that are non-compliant. And I'm assuming he's targeting some of the larger cities. There certainly are cities that are in compliance, such as West Hollywood and Santa Monica. My assumption is that after a little time goes by and he starts looking at the reporting, part of the annual housing reporting that is before you this evening as a consent item is going to be used to formulate the SCAG number, or SCAG will be formulating the very early numbers for the RENA count. And I think he's going to look at that, and we'll start going after cities. Actually, on Thursday afternoon, I'm going to be attending the Planning Director's Technical Advisory Committee Meeting, and we're going to be talking about some of the proposed legislation that Governor Newsom has outlined.
Okay. All right. Looking forward to hear what ideas you have.
Okay.
Thanks.
Anybody else have any questions on Items A, B, or C? If not, I'll open it up for public comment, and this is for our consent calendar A, B, and C. Do we have anybody wish to speak on any of those items? I don't see anybody standing up and coming down, so I'll go ahead and close it and bring it back to council. Any comments on A, B, or C, or are we ready to go forward?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
In the post? A, B, and C are adopted. Thank you. Next on our agenda is Adoption of Urgency Ordinance Amending Title 17, Chapter 17.93 of the Sierra Madre Municipal Court to Include Permit Requirements, Procedures, Standards, and Limitations for the Submitter and Review of Small Cell Wireless Facilities. An Introduction of an Ordinance Amending Title 17, Chapter 17.93 of the Sierra Madre Municipal Court Code to Include Permit Requirements, Procedures, Standards, and Limitations for the Submitter and Review of Small Wireless Facilities. Is that the longest title ever in history? I think it was. Okay. And we have our Director of Planning?
We have a PowerPoint for you this evening regarding the Small Cell Wireless Facilities Ordinance. So the Federal Communications Commission issued a declaratory ruling and order, which will take effect on April 15th, 2019, and it's part of a national strategy to promote the build-out of fifth-generation or 5G small cell mobile communication networks. And this ruling and order also requires various state mandates to be included in the ordinance, and it also limits regulatory impediments by the local jurisdiction. So historically, wireless communications have occurred through large tower structures and also stealth deployments, as you see the palm, the monopole camouflaged as a palm tree. The new small wireless communication networks can now operate through small radio equipment and antennas that are often no larger than a backpack. They can be deployed on existing utilities as well as new structures. Because of their small size, the coverage for small wireless installations will be required to occur more frequently. We're looking at probably an estimated between 250 to 500 feet between deployments. So we will see more of those to promote adequate coverage. So the purpose of the ordinance is to achieve compliance with the FCC ruling and order. The components of this presented to you this evening will be detailed on later slides, but tonight you will be considering adopting an urgency ordinance as well as concurrent non-urgency ordinance to include permit requirements for wireless facilities. The ordinance will include rules for reviewing, processing, and improving wireless applications, and also will establish fees by a separate City Council resolution. So the components of the ordinance are as follows, and they will be broken down individually as well. We will be adding a definition to the Wireless Communications Facilities Ordinance for Small Cell. We will also add new application review procedures and simply renumbering some of the sections to accommodate the new addition. So the ordinance components are broken down into eight subsections. Subsection A explains the purpose of providing a small wireless facility, and this is required through FCC orders, rules and orders, to be included within the ordinance. Subsection B requires an applicant who proposes deployment of a small wireless facility to apply for city permits, and that would include any permits through building and planning as well as public works. Subsection C specifies the application components. And some of the key requirements include that the city cannot request irrelevant information to determine whether the deployment meets objective city standards. Subsection D provides that small wireless facility permits are nondiscretionary, meaning that they will be approved and reviewed by the director. The requirements also include public notification within 500 feet of the site. The shot clock rules will apply, and they have been reduced from our normal shot clock procedures for wireless communication facilities. And it also allows applicants to submit up to five small cell wireless facilities, also called A, referred to as a batch. Section E establishes procedure for tolling an application. So for a new structure, it would be 90 days to review the application, and for attaching to an existing structure would be 60 days. Subsection F of the ordinance is also showing consistency with the FCC's definition of small wireless facility. It also adds objective findings that are required to be made by the director to approve or to deny an application. The key requirements in this case, that the deployment shall be located in most preferred location, 250 feet in any direction, and designed to be a stealth facility or integrated into another structure. Subsection G provides required conditions of approval for small wireless facility permit. And subsection H allows the city to deny a small wireless facility permit without prejudice to another application, meaning that we cannot favor one provider over the other. And upon denial of an application for a full wireless facility permit under the regular provisions of Chapter 17.3, they would be able to proceed with the regular, normal wireless facility that we would determine that it does not comply with the 5G or small cell component. Staff also prepare to cost recovery analysis, looking at the estimated cost and time it would take for staff as well as our consultants to prepare the application and conduct inspections and plan check. So looking at the table, we estimated approximately $1,060 in terms of both staff time as well as consultant time, that would including building inspections and plan check from our consultants. So the proposed fee is $1,000, and that is based on an application of up to five small cell installations. There would be an additional $100 charge that is allowed by the federal rule and order that we can charge greater than five cells, each $100 more. The federal order also stated that we would be limited to a $500, approximate limited to a $500 charge application fee, but if we can show that additional monetary money is required, and basically that was the assessment of looking at the building consultant time to conduct building inspections as well as plan check, that we can incorporate that into the overall fee. So this is what is being represented as $1,000. So the recommendation before City Council this evening is to adopt Urgency Ordinance 1410-U as well as Ordinance 1411, which amends Title 17, Chapter 17.93 Standards and Criteria for Wireless Communication Facilities of the Sierra Madre Municipal Code to Include Permit Requirements, Procedures, Standards, and Limitations for the Submitter and Review of Small Wireless Facilities, and also to adopt Resolution 19-07 Establishing an Application Processing Fee for Small Wireless Facilities. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the Director?
I do.
Okay.
Very fine report, Director. I'm curious about the public notification within 500 feet. Naturally, it comes to mind that someone wouldn't want one of these things if, some people might not want them. So this is notification. Is there any remedy there in case you have a neighborhood that doesn't want one of these?
There really isn't. This, again, is a state mandate or a federal communications requirement.
Yeah, Director Gonzalez is correct. We have tried, and first of all, I'd like to give some kudos to my colleague Matt Summers, who actually drafted both the existing ordinance that you have in the books, which is fully FCC compliant, but also the revision that you're looking at tonight to also come into compliance with yet another generation of FCC regulations. It will not, it's not the first, it will not be the last. But some of the things that he has provided here are the special rule that we have for you, which is the preferred location within 250 feet. That's what we prefer, not what the applicant prefers. So that may provide some relief from an applicant that says, why do I have to have this right next to me? Also, the FCC acknowledges that the small cell device cannot emit more than the designated EMF, you know, whatever that is. I know that's a concern of some people, and so that is acknowledged in the FCC rules that's carried over in the statute. And finally, we do have a provision that requires compliance with our stealth requirements, and we've tried to tighten those up a little bit. So that's what we can offer. And hopefully, that will be enough, but at the end of the day, it is not a discretionary review, it is ministerial. And the purpose of this, this 5G cell site is not for gap closure. It's because we're all using our smartphones as mini-computers, we're all streaming data, we're using them to watch video on, and that's what's requiring more and more and more data support and speed, and that's why the carriers are telling us we need these little cell devices, because as technology advances, the equipment gets smaller and smaller, but when it's small, it doesn't have a very long range. So then they need to put them closer and closer together, as Director Gonzalez illustrated in the presentation on PowerPoint.
Thank you.
Okay, follow-up to that. How would that work, the most preferred location at 250 feet? Let's say we have a resident lines out there within 500 feet, but how would this help them?
Well, actually, that's a good question, because I think that when the application first comes to us, I'm assuming that Vincent will look at it, because it is coming to him, and he might consider where the preferred location would be, but through that public notification process and comment that comes in, that could change the idea of where the preferred location really should be within a 200-foot radius. So...
Could that be like a give-and-take then between us and them until we find something both parties can live with, or do we have that much...
Yes, I mean, it's less expensive for them to work with the city, it's quicker, time is money. And it may also be, there may also be availability of a so-called new facility as opposed to tacking something on an existing facility. So an example of that would be, for example, replacing an existing street standard pole with a brand-new street pole where the small cell facility is hidden inside of it, you can't even see it. So that's an example of some working that we would be able to do and work with the provider to, because Sierra Madre has never been against or these kinds of facilities, but there's got to be a, some reasonableness on their side as well. And so we've tried to build into the ordinance, or Mr. Summers has, and it's built on an ordinance that he drafted for the city of Calabasas, which was upheld in court. And these specific protections, the most preferred location under 250 feet have been upheld, they've been challenged, and they're good. So we're, it's, we're doing the best we can to preserve what little local control the feds are letting us keep.
Just two more follow-up questions. So approximately, how many of these backpack-sized units are we talking about in the city, within the city limits of us? Any kind of estimate?
I have no estimate for that.
I'm guessing...
As I was saying, they're probably looking at, if we're doing a 250 or 500-foot radius around each, that would be looking at the coverage, but it's also per carrier.
Right.
So if you have two different carriers and they have different needs, that will also change circumstances.
My last question is that you go up the hill, start heading up the hillsides and the canyon, your cellphone coverage drops considerably, some places it's null. So will this help them? Do we know?
Possibly, depending on how far up and available utility poles that they might be able to deploy.
All right, thank you.
Do we have any other questions?
I do. I think we just want to change the application fee in the draft ordinance that we're adopting to 1,000. I think it's the 500 number still in there?
The 500 is still there.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's basically, the FCC says we can, a base fee of $500 for a batch of five cell sites. And they do provide the opportunity to increase that amount if you can show through cost recovery that it's warranted, and one of the parameters is if we have a consultant who provides technical assistance in terms of reviewing the applications, and then also concurrent building inspections.
Okay, so we want to keep the 500 application fee language in the actual text of the ordinance, but then just the resolution will do, because that's what we're doing here. That's why it's confusing. In the actual ordinance, it says 500, and then in the resolution, it says 1,000, so...
In the actual ordinance, I will double-check that, but it's basically talking about that we can charge up to $500, and then there's the language in there that also, so I'm looking at...
If you go to page...
It's section...
Yeah.
Section four.
Page 30 or 41 of the PDF, I don't know what the...
Five A. Yeah, I just saw it. Yeah, that's the 500 feet.
I'm just looking at C3 under 17.93.100, and it just says, "application fee and application fee of $500 or such other amount as may be established by the City Council by resolution."
Right.
And we have already established by the resolution that we're passing that it's going to be 1,000, so I just don't understand why we would keep the 500 in there. So anyway, that's something that we can figure out. I, you know, my other question is going to be, and it's similar to Councilmember Goss's point, which is, to the extent we don't want these, the small cell sites by schools or, you know, daycares, you know, the radiation concern is a huge, it's a huge concern for everyone, but especially small kids with skulls that are a lot thinner than adults and the damage that can happen to the brain. So what are we doing to protect, you know, protect our kids, protect anyone who doesn't want these next to their, you know, their house or where they're going to school?
Again, as City Attorney commented, these are state requirements, and the emissions, radio emissions coming from these units and other cell towers are supposed to be in compliance with state requirements in terms of emissions. So there's really not a lot we can do. We can try saying, we don't have anything in the ordinance that regulates that it has to be a certain distance away from a school or a daycare facility, so we're really still just following the federal rule. The City Attorney has any further input on this?
No, sadly, there's no exception for that. They, to even get the FCC to recognize that any level of EMF is harmful, that's what we're given, and they don't base it on the age of the human that they're talking about. As to Mayor Protem's comment on the $500 amount, I, it would not harm the ordinance in any way to strike the $500, and we could change the sentence to read, "an independent consultant fee deposit of an amount as may be established by council, City Council by resolution, et cetera, et cetera."
And what about the application fee? Would you keep that the same, right above it, the line right above where you just read?
Okay.
It also says...
I would also get rid of that.
It also references or other such amounts as may be...
Yeah, yeah.
...established by City Council. So this is basically identifying what the ruling was in terms of the fee.
Yeah.
And in the resolution, we took that into account under the cost recovery, and basically looking at what we determined were over $500 just for consulting costs alone.
Yeah. I just think it's confusing, because the telecoms are going to come in here, they're going to read our ordinance, and they're going to see an application fee for 500.
That's a good point.
And then they're going to have to go to the resolution that says something totally different, so I just think...
We can change it.
I think that's a good point, and it, there's just no indication in the FCC regulations that they put any thought or analysis whatsoever in coming up with $500. It appears that they just, you know, out of a, just picked the number $100 as a random amount, said, oh, well, a batch of five, that's 500, that should be enough, without taking into consideration the differences in personnel costs and city costs from, you know, any given city in the United States. So our resolution, which we haven't gotten to yet for discussion, I think does comply and does show the reasonable basis that is required to be shown in order to set the fee.
Any other questions?
Well, just as a follow-up to Mayor Protem's comment, but our preferred location can be a location that is not close to a school or daycare, and again, I don't know how that can be reflected internally as, in terms of procedure or process. It may not be part of the ordinance, but it can be identified internally as that that would not be our preferred location.
Right, and we do have those conversations, and actually, fairly recently, there was one location that was identified next to a residence, and we were able to get them to move that across the street away from residential uses near a park, over towards Sierra Vista Park.
So is there a way to memorialize that if, say, someone is, we don't want to lose you, but let's say you're not here tomorrow, and we're having this conversation, but is there a way to memorialize that? Is preferred locations will not, will be at least X amount of feet from schools or...
Could we incorporate that, City Attorney, into the ordinance?
I would suggest instead to have some staff guidelines, so that as the, they will not have the same impact as findings, but guidelines in terms of what we think, because it's our ordinance, what do we think preferred location means?
Yep, that makes sense.
Yeah, just a question about what we mean by stealth facilities. You know, just reading, it says that the equipment shall be placed underground to the maximum extent feasible, and all wires, cables, and other connections shall be completely concealed from the public view. I mean, it's kind of hard to do, isn't it? Then it also says in the next paragraph that the city prefers, in the public right-of-way to be configured on the following support structures in order of preference from most to least preferred. So the first thing, the most preferred, is existing or replacement street light standard. Why aren't we saying that our most preferred is underground?
Because technologically, some of these facilities, you can't have cell service with underground facilities. That's other forms of telecommunications that these companies engage in, maybe yes, but not your smartphone.
Well, is there enough teeth in the stealth paragraph here? It doesn't really say much. It just says, "all facilities shall include appropriate stealth and concealment techniques." What does that mean?
Yeah, we really are talking about aesthetic issues. We want, we don't want to see it, we want to be, have it hidden from view, and if the preferred location being on either an existing or a replacement light standard, replacement light standard is, that's equivalent to a new light standard, where you replace the light standard with a new light standard, and you hide or you bury the facility inside it. And they can do that, they have done that before, carriers in many cities. It's not that expensive for them, that's...
What's a little disturbing is just the first picture that was showed, where three different examples of these backpacks hanging off.
Right.
And I can imagine, you know, there's three or four carriers, and they're all going to want to get into the game.
Those are cities that did not, actually, I don't know where those pictures were taken, but I would posit the following happened. Either that particular jurisdiction did not have as strong of aesthetic requirements that we are trying to provide for Sierra Madre, or they just weren't, it wasn't an issue.
So the language that we have here would prevent that type of thing that was shown in the pictures?
We would try to prevent that. We would try to prevent that. They have a small cell facility by its term, by its definition, and it comes out of the federal law, can be up to three cubic feet, and that's just the antenna part, plus the equipment box that goes with it, sometimes referred to as a pizza box by telecommunication practitioners, can be up to 28 cubic feet. So they're not necessarily so small, but that's what the FCC, so they're, it's somewhat of a misnomer. Additionally, they, they're intended to be hung or attached to something that's already there in your urban environment, that already may have a height of up to 50 feet, or in an area where everything surrounding it is maybe much less than 50 feet, and in that case, they can go up to 10% above whatever the current environment is, and to the maximum extent that we can push it. And so far, we have, that ability has not been taken away. We can say, yeah, you can have it, and you can have it here within 250 feet of your preferred, or of the area that you need it, but you need to configure it in a way where we can't see it, and we know you have the technology to do it. So that's what you have to do here.
Okay, I imagine that we're going to have to watch this as it's rolled out...
Yes.
...and look for any opportunity to, you know, control it. But again, the problem is, is that most of us want it as well, and we have to be careful.
We do.
We don't, yeah, we don't want to stifle the development, have them avoid Sierra Madre because we're too hard to deal with, so it's going to be tricky, it sounds like.
And Director, I just want to clarify that we are doing this, an urgency ordinance, because we have to have this passed in April 15.
In place by April 15, and we're also concurrently running a non-urgency ordinance at the same time. So at the next meeting, we'll be coming back with a second reading of that ordinance.
Okay.
It's due to the effective date of the second reading, 30 days out, that we want to make sure that we have adequate coverage and have a fee established.
Okay. I'm going to open it up for public comment. Does anybody have any comments on our small cell wireless facilities?
Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. One thing I learned in Temple City after we had a bunch of power poles go over is OSHA said the poles were overloaded, and this box can overload an old pole. What OSHA said during a hearing on, when these poles broke over there during a windstorm, was they have a 35-year max before they have to be repaired. And I've seen some poles around here, and they're probably close to 70, 80 years old. If they're that old, there needs to be something in there that tells the city, okay, or they need to send somebody out to look at the pole and make sure that that pole's capable of supporting that box, even though it looks like a backpack, still drilling holes into an old pole could split it and break it. You know, this is something that OSHA came down on Temple City and Edison and the phone companies about. They had a meeting in Alhambra a month after, and that's where I learned this, that poles can be overloaded. You got to make sure, before they put them up, the pole can safely handle it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Dr. Lee. The private speaker had a very good point, and make sure that then... The private speaker had a very good point, and make sure that then the, that AT&amp;T will be responsible for replacing the pole if needed. Since I'm one that received one of the letters saying that I might have this buried in my front area of my yard, I couldn't resist the irony of getting up here and saying, you know, "I'm okay with maybe getting some of those gamma rays," whatever. Of course, they should conduct a frequency admitting test to make sure that we're not getting overexposed. But if we had something in place back when my boyfriend passed away, he was only a few blocks from my house, and I was not able to get cellphone reception for the phone call that came the night before, before I found him the next day. And just those few blocks, he'd have to go out and go about a block and a half away to call me. So, the cellphone reception is very bad in this town. But I couldn't escape the irony that they'll put one in front of my house, because it's like higher powers. I guess I need those extra frequencies now, you know, a couple of years later. But it looks like something that we're going to be stuck with. It was due diligence on your part, John, to catch that for the 500 versus, you know, 1,000. And Sierra Madre might be able to make a deal, like maybe give us one of those old palm tree towers so we can stick the fire horn on top out in the city yard so it echoes against the mountain like it used to. Just kidding. Anyway, that's it.
Thank you. Okay. Does this warrant any more discussion, or can we move forward?
I would just, I think Mr. Stafford's idea is probably something we should consider. I don't know how we, staff considers that when you deal with the telecom.
Well, I would say that in the application criteria, they do have to bring a site plan and show the engineering specs of what they're proposing to build and what it's going to weigh, et cetera. And it would, most or, most site plans are not only reviewed by the planning department, but Public Works often looks at them as well for compliance with these kinds of things. So, we are very concerned, you know, interested in and concerned about the safety of any installation in the city.
Could we compel them to replace a pole if we felt it was too weak to-
Yeah, we could. We could say, "Look, you know, this won't, this particular pole won't withstand the weight. Why don't you consider doing a new pole or a replacement pole and bury your facility in it?" So, then you have the best of all worlds. You're not, it's easier to maintain for you, we don't have to look at it, and you don't have to worry about it being a potential safety issue.
Can we require an engineer's certification that the structure is adequate?
I doubt that. It's not in the, I don't know that we can require them to submit a, an engineer's certificate that it's adequate. But as we will be reviewing to see if it's adequate, do we think that the existing structure, if we're talking about putting it on an existing structure, is adequate to support it? If we call that into question, then we could ask them to prove up. And I see Director Semino running to my rescue.
Vincent and I have been talking, and James has been talking about our procedure for these permits. At this time, what we're going to, we have to issue a permit first for them to go to Edison and then get the approval to be on their pole. They're not our poles, they're not normally telephone poles either, they're power poles. Edison will approve them going onto their pole, and what we could request from them when they get that approval is Edison, they evaluate their poles, I think every other year, they core them and they determine the condition of those poles. And we're thinking of being able to ask them for the result from Edison before we issue the contractor the permit to come in and do the installation itself. So, we're trying to think of all that also. And we do have Edison, their contractors are all over town pulling permits to replace a lot of our poles. We are in the foothill areas. We all, I think we all got a note from Edison. They're really trying to replace all of our poles. So, a lot of them are new, but we could still make sure that they're in quality condition before something goes on.
Thank you. That was really good information for us. Okay, bringing it back to council. Any more discussion? Are we ready to move forward?
Sure. I guess we'll move, what is it, the three different, the ordinance and then the urgency, the regular ordinance, and then the resolution.
Yes. The urgency ordinance requires a four-fifths vote, and if we have the four-fifths vote this evening to adopt it with any changes that, or further direction that you may have, it will be effective immediately. We need also, it could all be in the same motion, or you could do separate motions. As for the regular ordinance, that's just first reading only, waiving the reading of title, although the city clerk could also read the title of that, but it is a very long title, and the mayor has already read it.
Mm-hmm.
And then the final action is to approve the resolution setting the fee.
So, so moved. With the changes that were made and with the recommendation from Council Mayor Esmond about the staff, the staff guidelines.
Can we just remind the public what the change would be?
The change was the $500 amount being changed to a thou, the same amount, which I believe is a thousand, that is reflected in the resolution, and then the staff guidelines regarding the preferred location.
And just a friendly amendment on, there is, not content, but the numbering was a little bit off, and just making sure that we correct those changes. I couldn't follow, some of it didn't match the power.
Yes. Councilmember Esmond is questioning whether some of the numbering is laid out or whether we might have skipped a number. So, if the friendly amendment includes requesting city attorney to go back and make sure that the numbering is accurate, but that's not a substantive edit.
Ministero.
Then, yes, then we can do that as well.
Great. I'll second the motion.
So, just, so everybody knows, we're doing the adoption of the urgency ordinance with the changes of the amount of the permit and application, correct?
Correct.
We are including the recommendation for staffing guidelines, and we are asking the city attorney to look at the numbering. Then we are also recommending the regular resolution to go for a second reading.
First reading tonight for the regular ordinance, correct?
And what was the third thing?
And the third thing is the resolution setting the fee.
Okay.
Okay, so it's been seconded, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, motion, motion carries. Okay, next we have the YMCA lease, is that correct?
Thank you, Mayor. And we also have members of the YMCA in the audience tonight, if council wishes to call upon them. For council's review tonight is a lease renewal of the YMCA. The YMCA has continually leased the Sierra Madre Community Recreation Center since January 9th, 2012. The lease update changes, makes a lot of little changes to language and cleanup, but there's also three substantive changes we'd like to bring to council's attention. They are Sierra Madre Room Rentals, Community Programs and Activities, and Responsibilities for Capital Improvements, and they are as follows. The YMCA, under the proposed lease, will be responsible for the rental and reservations of the Sierra Madre Room. Currently, the city shares responsibility for these rentals. Moving forward, if the lease is approved, the YMCA will provide room rentals and reservations, and also will be responsible for the care cleaning and maintenance of the room. They will also receive all revenues associated with the rentals. Item two, the city of Sierra Madre, at its sole discretion, will provide YMCA funds to create, establish, or enhance programs that are in the best interest of the community due to the lack of current program availability or for community desire and demand. Programs will be created in consultation with the Community Services Commission. All revenue from programs will be retained by the YMCA. The city will agree to subsidize the programs until they are self-sufficient, discontinued, or providing 30 days' advance written notice of intent to cancel the program's support. Finally, the final proposed change will make the YMCA responsible for all daily and operational routine maintenance and repair of the community center and all components of the building, with the exception of the lift. These components include but are not limited to AC, lighting, plumbing, and heating elements. The city clarified this contract language with YMCA, and this portion has been in effect for the past year. Staff, myself, or the YMCA are happy to answer any questions council has.
Can I just see who's here from the YMCA? Thank you for attending, we appreciate it. Any questions from council?
Go ahead.
Just real quick, when we want to use the Sierra Madre Room for our, we have to get 30-day notice, or?
The, Councilmember Capocha, the city use of the Sierra Madre Room will not change. We'll still have the four days free of charge. We can use it for, by providing advance notice. I'm not sure if it's 30 days' advance notice, but-
We've been working with you eagerly on-
That portion is also true.
Yeah.
How we use it today won't change. For the city use, for city activities, what will change is groups that want to rent it currently contact the city, we reserve it, we pay for the cleaning and maintenance, we send a porter out there. Moving forward, they'll contact the YMCA for the reservation.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I just have two quick ones. The Sierra Madre Room will still be the same price? Is it, or, and who sets the price, I guess now?
So, council currently sets the price, and we reduced fees pretty substantially two budgets ago. Under this proposal, the fees would be set and collected by the YMCA.
Okay. And my second one question is just about the $10,000 for programming. It sounds great, you know, is there going to be, and the YMCA folks can answer, what do they have in mind? You know, is this, are there programs that they wish they'd be doing now that they just don't have the funds for, or is it really just, we'll figure it out once, once we get there?
So, I'll let the YMCA answer if they have programs that they wish they were doing. I know from a community services standpoint, there are programs we wish were in the community that are currently not offered. When we decided to rent the community center out and the pool out, a lot of the programs that we had at the time kind of went by the wayside. We're looking at this as a relatively small investment that will diversify the revenue stream for the YMCA, while bringing needed programs to the community. We also are looking to get the Community Services Commission involved, as they likely know better than I do what those needs are.
Rick Polite, Executive Director with the YMCA. And to answer the question, I think we are really looking for some feedback from the community a little bit more, and your commission is probably a good place, a pipeline, to have those discussions. We try different things, and, you know, sometimes it takes a while to get the word out in this community. I think you all know that as well. But having, having the city work with us and getting the feedback, and when we offer something, helping promote it, will help us with this as well. But our whole purpose is really to meet the needs of your community. So, you know, looking forward to the opportunity, and it is discretionary money for you to do this.
And thank you for being a good partner with us.
Oh, you're welcome.
We appreciate that. Any other questions?
I just had a follow-up to the earlier question. The rentals on the Sierra Madre Room in particular, that'll be discretionary in your part for you guys. Would residents of our town get preference if there was a conflict?
Actually, if I understand, well, I'll let Gabe answer, right?
So, Councilmember Goss, the YMCA or the city, whoever is controlling the Sierra Madre Room can't give a price preference by whether they are a resident.
Not pri, I meant, I meant just in terms of the scheduling conflict.
I know. I'm just pointing that out, and then if there is a scheduling conflict, that would be up to the Y to handle.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, I'm going to go ahead and open this item up for public comment. Good evening.
Good evening. This is Pat Elcorn. I think Councilman Harabedian probably addressed my issue, but it says that the Leasee will conduct its business on a nonprofit, as a nonprofit charity, in the scope of services. But I was wondering if, for instance, if someone like the nonprofit Civic Club had their main fundraiser in the Sierra Madre Room, rented it from the city, however, would that be still available as a nonprofit at a lower rate than, than the Y would be doing? So, the fee for rentals, I think, is an issue that we've had for maybe a couple of years, and I noticed that the fee went down maybe last year, and so we, the residents would be able to use that facility again, but is it going to go back up? Another thing is that when the Y first took over the rec center, there was a youth program that happened for an afternoon activity hour. The, when the Y took that over, the fees were so high that several of the children, several of the families were not able to take part in that, and so they ended up on Kirsten Court, which has caused all kinds of problems in the past three or four years. And so, I'm wondering if there would be a program for after-school activities that would be a fee that the families would be able to afford. That's just my questions. Thank you.
Do we have anybody else who would like to comment on this?
Yeah, Elcorn on Granville, I'd just like to punctuate what Pat said, that the initial thing was supposed to be for the kids, and that was one thing, they fell down on the job, they didn't conduct it very well. I'd like to know what is the incentive for them, other than public like that, because they didn't do a good job of that. And it ended up being a high-priced babysitting outfit, and the kids weren't taken care of. And it wasn't provided for, and it's been going on for a long time. So, I'd like to know what his insurance is, if they're really going to have honest to goodness, interest for the kids and have some viable program that'll go on. You'd say you're going to have some sort of subsidy, but I'm not sure that's adequate. I'd like to make sure that when they come up with this thing, that they're really going to have a really program that is useful to the majority of the kids and that are going to participate, or have a chance to participate, and not be priced out of the participation in that. Because it ended up just being a high-priced babysitting operation in the, in the school, and the other kids are just out. I'd just like to see some sort of, anyway, I've said it, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Barbara Lee, more valid points. If you could give me clarification on the subsidies, are we, the city, giving subsidies to the YMCA? Because if we are, really, it should be the other way around. What are we gaining from having the YMCA here? I mean, they are wonderful, I lived nearby. I assume that all the kids walking back and forth up to Kirsten Court were a blend of Sierra Madreans and Pasadenaans, but it kind of sounds like maybe the Sierra Madre kids are going to hang out under the pergola that's going to be built in Kirsten Court. What are we gaining as a city? We had really strong programs going for a while, and the YMCA has been doing a good job, they've kind of taken over where we let down. But if I can get a feedback on how many children from Sierra Madre actually participate with the YMCA, and then also do a yearly calendar, so you don't have confusion on which rooms, which room is being rented out when, and the preference goes, of course, to Sierra Madre events. It's very simple. Lot of traffic, lot of kids, lot of activity, lot of laughter, but really, this was done when programs were dismantled and blended to be an upgrade for Sierra Madre. So, what are we receiving back? Thanks.
Thank you. Did you want to answer some of those questions?
Yes, Mayor, I will trial, as is customary now. I will go in reverse order. So, we get the question that the commenter asked a lot about what's in it for the city. And for the city, our fundamentals have not changed about our ability to pay for and operate either a pool or the community center. So, leasing either facility out, when you combine them, brings in about $107,000 in revenue annually to the city. It also avoids the cost of staffing the pool and staffing- It also avoids the cost of staffing the pool and staffing the community center. Staffing the community center alone, should we not sign the lease, is likely to be four to six full-time people. So you're now looking at the lost revenue from the lease, the operating expenses, including utilities, plus staffing the facility. That when we operated before, the reason the programs were cheap is they, again, they were heavily subsidized. So when we refer to programs as being dismantled, I don't think that's an inaccurate description. What we're trying to do is provide subsidy to the Y to try and build up some of the programming that we lost through, through the course of the outsourcing. With regards to the, the quality of the programs offered in the past or currently, when a private business offers a program, they have an incentive to bring people to that program to make revenue or to expose them to their mission. When the city operates a community center and people don't come to the program, there's no negative outcome for us. It's just a program that doesn't break even. So again, for council, we decide on, is this a service we're providing to the community and how much is that? With regard, with regards to the rentals, the Y does have the ability to charge a different rate for profit versus nonprofit. They can break it out by category, just not residents. What we saw is almost no-room rentals for about six years at the Sierra Madre Room, 1,300 a year, 1,400 a year total. Council substantially lowered the rates and all of a sudden, boom, we're getting $4,000 to $6,000 a year. We would hope the YMCA has that information. We would hope they would take into account the market forces at play. They also aren't limited by the same types of rentals where we do where we have six or four-hour minimums because they have staff there, they don't have to schedule us specifically and then assign people to attend. Having said that, under this lease, council does not set the rates by category or for room rentals. This would be up to the YMCA.
And what about the after-school programs?
Specific programs, I'll refer to Mr. Polite.
So can I follow up? So there's still a substantial cost savings by doing this, compared to staffing this ourselves and running it ourselves?
That's correct, Councilman Gosse. There's a substantial cost savings, there's substantial cost avoidance, and there's also substantial revenue. So we're hitting all, all three legs of the stool.
But just, just to make something clear about the subsidy, what, what you're proposing in this arrangement is to, is to cede the money to get a program started and then we would decide later if we were going to continue to subsidize a program that we feel would be valuable to Sierra Madre. And that's to the point that this is why programs disappeared, because they may be not cost-effective in breaking even, but they still might be valuable to the community as, and we, Community Services decides that. So I'm not against a subsidy. I mean, that's what, you know, people pay taxes to get something in return and if we think it's of benefit to the community, I would be in favor of keeping a subsidy, but I, you know, how much it needs, needs to be seen. I mean, a good example is we don't have tennis lessons in town anymore. Is that valuable to the community? Would we want to subsidize that to a degree? Maybe cede the money to get it started and maybe it would be profitable if it was run better than it was before, you know? So I just want to make that point. Thanks.
And I just wanted to get my answer to the after-school program, please.
So at, at the Sierra Madre Center, we operate two after-school programs. We operate licensed school-age childcare program, which is from kindergarten through fifth grade, and then we do an after-school recreation program for middle school students, which is really a carryover from program that the city of Sierra Madre did in, in your center that you referred to as the YAC or the Youth Activity Center. So we're still carrying on that same program. Yes, we charge fees for those programs. Depends on your consideration of what the cost is. Our program is licensed, so our ratios are lower than some other providers. We also have staff that are, were qualified. But in addition to that, what many people don't realize is that we provide financial assistance to people that are lower income. Last year, the Sierra Madre Pasadena YMCA provided about $50,000 of financial assistance to people in childcare, in camps, in different programs. Now, that was not all in Sierra Madre. I don't know off the top of my head how much that was here, but there were families in this community that received assistance in that way.
So you do provide financial assistance?
Yes.
Thank you. Any more discussion needed on this item?
Go ahead.
Just a couple of comments and, and two things I think that were brought up today. One thing I really would like the Y to consider is the consideration of a nonprofit rate and differentiating, differentiating that for, for profit. You know, our nonprofits have done so much in our community and I think they could help support the work that you're doing there. And then, oh.
If I may, I meant to make the statement. So YMCA's partner with other nonprofits. So I don't, we'd have to really figure out exactly what the situation is, but we work with nonprofits and in this case, what I would say is we would probably figure out what is our exact direct expense and look at that as the cost that we would do. Otherwise, we're not in a position to subsidize, but we're also not looking to make money off another nonprofit. We partner with them.
Okay, thank you. And then the second item is, and I think you had already mentioned this, sir, is just working very closely with our Community Services Commission on the programming piece and then also doing outreach to schools, which I know is something that you do normally throughout the region. And our, our schools, I know, are very active as are our parents and, and I think to, to generate participation, but as well as doing the outreach is to make sure you're working closely with them.
Mayor Potem?
I was going to say that she stole my, my thing on the nonprofit, so echo, ditto.
Anything else from the side of the desk? Okay, if not, I will bring it back. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. And thank you, gentlemen, for coming out to be able to answer those questions. I am looking at the time, does anybody up here need to take a break? Are we okay to go for the next two items? Okay. Next, we have consideration of Resolution 1909, initiating formation proceedings, the City of Sierra Madre Downtown and Lighting Maintenance District.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. If you forgive me, I'm going to read this because I don't want to miss anything tonight in this report. Tonight, I'm here for the second phase of establishing a new downtown assessment district. The new district is designated to replace the existing four downtown districts to better utilize the assessments for the benefit of the downtown businesses. The adoption of Resolution 1909, initiating proceedings to, is required to begin the formation process for the district by districting or directing that an engineer's report be prepared. NBS was hired at a previous meeting to assist us with this process. In response to the need to appropriate funding for such maintenance, staff proposes the formation of the Downtown Lighting and Landscaping Maintenance District. And will levy special assessments therein. The formation of the new district will be subject to the majority protest proceedings for the property owners within the territory in compliance with the California Constitution and the Proposition 218 process. The city currently has four existing special assessment districts which finance various services and improvements, including parking, lighting, landscaping, and associated maintenance within the central business area of the city. Each of the four districts was established to fund the cost of improvements and maintenance for specific benefits in the downtown district. However, as council is aware, two of the districts do not collect enough funds and are subsidized by expenditures from the general fund to, to the tune of $78,000 annually. The remaining two districts collect more revenue than is required for the benefit provided and accumulate, and have accumulated a combined fund balance of $595,000. If formed, the new district would pay for the maintenance of the landscaping and lighting improvements put in place by these existing assessment districts and fund the implementation and associated maintenance of additional similar improvements in the downtown district area. The new district would collect $22,000 less than the current combined collections from, from the four districts. It is recommended that the city council take the following action. Adopt a resolution initiating proceedings to form the new Downtown Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance District, Attachment A, or Attachment 1, I'm sorry. Authorizing NBS Government Finance Group to act as the engineer of record for the new district and order the preparation of the engineer's report. I'm happy to answer any questions. And we also have Assistant City Clerk Laura Aguilar here for any questions pertaining to the 218 process.
Any questions?
Couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Director Sminen, for that presentation. And, and maybe you can answer this. Can you remind me again what the timeline is for the Prop 218 and, and the response time?
From when the, the ballots go out, it's 45 days.
45 days, okay. Then the second question I had is, has there been any outreach and a communication with the businesses, any work with the chamber and, and talking to folks so they know what's, might be coming down the pipeline?
Yeah, that's all part of the process with our consultant and that's going to initiate now, right after the engineering report is done. The engineering report's going to, to establish the funds and, and the, the needed funds and the, the appropriate assessment on each property.
Okay, thank you.
So then that, that'll be all part of the process.
Thank you.
Who else has questions? Councilman Capocha.
Just a quick one. Is, is the district boundaries defined? It's not in the resolution?
Yeah, I didn't include it in the report. We have a boundary definition. We've, we've included East Montecito from our existing downtown district. We've included South Baldwin to, to Suffolk and North Baldwin to Highland.
So is that, does that overlap? Is that consistent with the four districts that were?
Yeah, it's, it's including some more space, like East Montecito.
It's bigger?
Yeah, a little bit bigger than before.
Okay.
No questions? How about you, Councilman Gosse? Okay, let's go ahead and open this item up for public comment.
There are other people in the audience and I'm probably just going to come once a year now because I'm jumping up so much. But I haven't been here for a while. We used to subsidize the downtown business district. I don't know if we're still doing that. So enlarging this maintenance, lighting maintenance district, that probably brings in about three new businesses, but it's complicated. I know the majority of the business, businesses are all owned by out-of-towners or even out of the country owners. So I don't know what that would do for the rental increases on the businesses. They have to pick up an additional amount of money to keep the landscaping and maintenances, maintenance area up. So, yeah. It also gives me a chance to say thank you for the new lighting that's been installed downtown. Quite a shock when I first saw it. Now I almost rely on it too much. If you have an extra one down by the library would be great because all the kids that walk from school down to the library and that's one area in town where someone was killed years ago from crossing the street there. And also thank you for the new benches to sit around town. I haven't been here for a while, so I wanted to make sure I got that in. Anyway, I'm glad I'm not sitting up there. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else who would like to talk about the, um, public comment for this item? If not, I'll go ahead and bring it back to council.
Mayor, is it okay to respond to the comment?
Sure.
So when Chris hates to give praise to himself, but I am not afraid to do that. So this plan reduces the overall collection in the district by about 15%. So it's clear where other cities are going through and trying to tax more and collect more. We're actually reducing the overall tax burden on the district by 15%. This also because it aligns the benefits the businesses get with what the district can offer. It also reduces the general fund subsidy by about $40,000. So we're charging people less to provide better service and reducing a general fund subsidy.
Win-win-win. Thank you, Director. Okay, any discussion on this item?
I think I'm going to support voting for a 15% tax cut. I think I'm on board for that.
Think so? Do you need to think about it a little longer or are you okay?
This is just, we very seldom get this kind of a win-win where, like, everybody benefits. So this is great.
Okay. If everybody thinks it's great, do we have a motion?
I'll move that we adopt Resolution 1909.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Last tonight on our agenda is state and district sales tax.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a brief PowerPoint presentation.
Okay.
This will seem like deja, deja vu to council because the first 10 slides are exactly the same as the last presentation we gave, but it's just to bring the conversation back up and then we provided answers to the questions that council asked. With that, I will, I will run through this as, as quickly as I can. Currently, in the district, the state sales tax limit is 10.25%. A district tax cap is 2%, meaning any districts within the county within the district limit. When they combine all their taxes together, it cannot exceed 2% sales tax. Currently, the state is collecting 7.25% sales tax in every transaction, so as you can see, they have 3% of their cap remaining. They can go up to 10.25. Our district in LA County is currently taxing at 2.25%, which as you see exceeds the district tax cap by the state. That is because 1% has, has been exempted by the state and we'll show those two taxes momentarily, but right now there is 0.75% of sales tax authority remaining in Sierra Madre and it does not matter which agency puts it forward to collect it after that, without an exemption will be at the limit. So current district sales tax authority, as you can see, equal 2.25%. It was Measure R and Measure M, 1% total, half-cent sales tax each that were exempt from the 2% district limit. And when we look at the county, which is the district in this case, their tax history since 2008, they have proposed 11 new taxes. There's only been one state election in 2010 where some type of new tax was not proposed. Nine of the 11 proposed taxes have passed and of the two that failed, one of those passed at a later date. So essentially, when the council or the county puts forward a tax, that tax is destined to pass. This is a real heavy slide. The only number to pay attention to is right here. What this shows is for every dollar collected in sales tax, Sierra Madre, the government of Sierra Madre only retains 33.6 cents out of every dollar. We are a donor to the county, we are a donor to the state. And I just said that. So for tonight, hey, the new slides. Council discussion and direction on two items. One, should Sierra Madre join with other San Gabriel Valley cities in a coordinated effort to lobby the legislature to limit or eliminate further exemptions from the sale tax, sales tax district cap? And two, should the city council support a sales tax measure in Sierra Madre in an attempt to eliminate the county permanently foreclosing on the city's ability to collect and retain future sales tax revenues? So the options that council has, if they choose to support a sales tax, is to call for a special election in 2019. That can be done by voter initiative or by declaring a fiscal emergency. As we've discussed, Sierra Madre staff cannot recommend declaring a fiscal emergency. Our, our finances are sound. Voter initiative could, could call for a special election. That would cost the city approximately $200,000. If we coordinated with other cities who are likely to have a sales tax election this year, that cost may come down, but what we're hearing from the county is there is basically a jumping off point where just to host the election in an off year is going to cost you a significant amount of money. Option two, which I'm assuming there will be a lot of conversation about, I will defer to the city attorney, but council could adopt a citizen initiative that is 15% valid signatures of all registered voters in Sierra Madre. You can adopt, adopt the sales tax with a successful collection of signatures. Option three would be to host a regular election in 2020 and that can be done either by voter initiative or an act of government. So general versus special sales tax, a general sales tax is 50% plus one for approval. If it's a dedicated sales tax, it's two-thirds supermajority. So if you wanted to collect a sales tax and earmark it to any specific city service, it would require the, the supermajority. Well, that was a quick ending. I hit the button too fast, but I am completed, so we'll happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
I have a quick question. I think we already got the answer, but just for the benefit of the public, there are other cities in our area, San Gabriel Valley, who are operating under the assumption they're going to lose the ability to tax if they don't do this, and some have actually done it already, correct?
That's correct, Councilwoman Goss. I believe there's currently 18 cities who have passed a sales tax with the idea of stopping the district or anyone within the district from collecting that. Currently, the cities of Arcadia, Duarte, Monrovia, San Marino, and some others that I'm forgetting are discussing openly with their council. South Pasadena declaring a financial emergency in an attempt to pass a sales tax.
Could I just add that it's not a question of whether you're thinking, gee, I'd like to tax our citizens? Where it's really a question of what capacity is left to tax and is the county going to take it? You're going to get the tax anyway, but do you want to keep 100% of it for Sierra Madre? And the only way to do that is for Sierra Madre to consider whether it wants a local sales tax. Or we could wait, and the county will surely get the excess capacity, which right now is only 0.75%. The other problem is with the county sales tax, your vote is very diluted because now the whole county is voting on that sales tax. Whereas a local sales tax for Sierra Madre, the money stays in Sierra Madre, and only Sierra Madre citizens get to vote on it. So it's kind of a form of local control, although I know it's hard to think about taxing.
Just to add, that's an important clarifying point. Just to add, we've heard from the county or districts in the county, at least two sales taxes are likely to come forward in 2020, or one in 2020 and one in 2022. So the question becomes when the tax is implemented, not if. It's just, as the city attorney said, where do the revenues go?
So just so I can simplify it for myself, the state has said you can only tax up to a certain amount, and we're reaching that cap. And so we have to decide if we want to tax our citizens so we can keep that money in Sierra Madre, or do we want to let the county or another entity put it through a sales tax that we will be paying them outside of Sierra Madre? Did I get that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have a couple. Just the difference on the collection of signatures should a citizen group, it's 15% and then we can just adopt it? It's 15% of the total number of registered voters?
The issue there is 15% of the total registered voters is what it will require, plus a request, to place an initiative on a special election. If registered voters want to give you an initiative and say, we're perfectly okay with this being placed on the next general election, it's only 10%. But whenever a measure is pertaining to taxes, there's actually a very low signature requirement. It doesn't mean you can just adopt it. It just means they've qualified the signature, and that's actually only 5% of the number of citizens who actually, in Sierra Madre, who actually voted at the last gubernatorial election.
Right.
So the 15% is the highest number, but that's if citizens are saying, those who sign, we would like to place an initiative on a special election. You can place, if it's through a citizen initiative, a tax for general purposes on a special election. The city itself cannot do that without a declaration of a fiscal emergency.
Yeah, what I'm trying to get to is it's 15% of the registered voters, and if we were, if somebody was to collect that many signatures, and that comes out to, what, over 1,000?
Correct.
Then we could just, the council can just adopt it and not have an election.
That is the law under the Elections Code, and that has never been tested with a tax. And, but yes, that is the law.
But for us to put it on, if signatures were collected and for us to then place it on an election, it's only 5% of the number of voters in the last gubernatorial election. Why the different standard for the base from which you're determining a percent of?
It's a complicated answer. I'll try to break it down. The 5% number comes from the California Constitution under Article 13, the whole Proposition 13 and Prop 218. So any citizen's initiative pertaining to a tax at all, whether it's repeal a tax, create a tax, amend a tax, if they want to do that by citizen's initiative, they bring you a petition signed by only 5%. That's just the law under the Prop 218 rules.
Yeah.
The rules under the Elections Code are more general, and 10% is normally all you need in terms of signatures. If it was anything but a tax, it would be 10%. And 10%, if the matter was something that would be placed on a general election, the council could say, you know what, we're not going to put it on the general election. We have a valid petition here with 10% signed signatures. We're just going to adopt it.
Yeah.
So that's legal. Now, we could do the same thing with 15% signatures, where they're requesting a special election. Because remember, the council doesn't have the authority. Well, we, otherwise, if it wasn't 15% signatures, we would not go to the trouble and the expense of placing, we would not be required by law to place something on a special election without the 15% signatures. But the point is, whenever you have the signature cap reached, whether it's the 10% or the 15%, 10% for a general election, 15% for a special election, the council has the authority under the Elections Code to say, we're not going to, the citizens have spoken on the petition, we're not going to submit this to the ballot, we will just adopt it. So that's an option. When I say it hasn't been, it hasn't been challenged yet in court, what hasn't been challenged in court is doing that with a tax. Plenty of cities have adopted a citizen's initiative with, in lieu of calling a special election, on a matter that wasn't a tax.
I see. Okay.
Any other questions?
Just to follow up, because I guess now I'm a little confused. Is it 10? No, 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 it's just the 10% to 15.
Yes.
So the 15%, you kept saying for a special election.
Correct.
But, you know, the way I'm reading it here was that the 15% could be for a non-special as well? Like, in other words, what if they just, what if it took them, the citizen's initiative took longer than, you know, when the special election would take place? They just collected signatures for a year and a half? And then they brought us 15%, right, showing the signatures? We then could not adopt it at that time because it would no longer be a special election? Or?
No, well, first of all, you've got to meet the window of time for considering putting something on the ballot. So they've got a certain number, a certain time period to bring it. It can't be too close to when the election starts, and if they meet all those parameters, and let's say for the sake of argument, they've got 15% signatures, and you happen, and it's 2020, for the sake of argument. 2020 is a general election year. They only needed 10%, but they had 15. So yes, you could, you could either put it on the ballot for a general election that year, or you could say, we're just going to adopt it. The difference is, go ahead.
Okay, just flip it a little bit here, and there's a citizen initiative out there collecting signatures. They didn't make it. They got 14% by the special election. So in December, they've got 14%. Can we just adopt it then because we've met the 10% threshold for the next one?
Yeah, would it carry over to the general?
Yes, in 2020. I mean, theoretically, yes. But as I say, that has never been tested in court. And, I mean, to be fair, it's a weighty decision for a council to adopt a tax for the community on the basis of 10 or even 15% signature collections on a citizen's initiative. It is lawful. It has not been challenged in court with a tax.
So I imagine that the risk is, between now and 2020, we're not sure what other taxes could pop up and, you know, what else there could be. But I'd imagine that if a tax is going to be voted on, it would be in 2020 for other districts, right?
That is correct. It will be in 2020, and that's why you've been having this discussion with your city manager about whether it would be appropriate to make a finding of fiscal emergency so that the council might consider, it's still one of your options, to place something on a special election this year.
So let's say we move forward with saying, hey, we want a special election, even though it costs $200,000. But then we get 15% by a citizen initiative. Is there still a cost that we'd be paying? We'd say, oh, no, now we want to adopt it, but we have initiated a special election.
Let's, okay, let's pretend that you, that the citizens circulate a petition to have that tax that's surely coming, but let it be a city of Sierra Madre tax. And they circulate that petition, they bring you 15% signatures this year within the timeframe. Okay, now you have a decision. You can either place it on the ballot this year, and let's assume further that it's a special tax, which requires only 50% plus one vote. The city does not have the power in and of itself to place a city initiative for a general tax at a special election. That's, I know, these are very confusing rules. The citizens can do it if they decide to do it, and they do that through a citizen's initiative. And then there is the potential of the council saying, we've got 15%. The Elections Code says we can adopt the ordinance, if it's a legal ordinance. And of course, that would also include that the citizens in the initiative petition had requested a special election. That's an important part of qualifying for a special election. You have to request it, and you got to get the 15% signatures.
Okay.
I have one quick question. This will take two seconds. Can the citizen's initiative actually, for the 10 or 50%, be a specific use sales tax? Or does it have to be a general use?
It can be whatever the citizens say it should be. But if it's a, but if it's a specific use, it's got to get a two-thirds vote.
But how do you get a two-thirds vote if we just adopt it? See, that's my point. If you can get the 15.
Right.
If we just adopt it, then there is no election.
No, I'm saying if you take it to the ballot, it would have to get a third.
Yeah, yeah. We just adopt.
Therein lies the challenge and the case that has not yet happened.
Okay.
That doesn't mean it's never been done. That means it hasn't been challenged. We do not have case law saying you can't do that even though the Elections Code says you can.
Any other questions? If not, I'm going to open it up for public comment.
Yeah.
Okay, Barbara Lee, I wasn't going to get up, but why not? I'm so happy that we have a wonderful new city manager that really knows his finances, can do math fast in his head. What would be, as citizens, be looking at if the state, which it will be increasing the sales tax, what will we be losing as a city if we don't meet the threshold of raising our tax to the amount of where the state can no longer tax us? And after we reach that threshold, would that be the end-all of taxes? Is there anything else that would initiate another increase that the city would require? I don't think the state could because it hasn't been tested, but since you're the finance man, is that, am I making a little bit of sense, dollars? Could you?
I wish I could answer, yes, this will be the end-all of taxes. There's two situations where taxes could increase in the hypothetical world where we've reached the district sales tax limit. The first is, the state has not reached its state sales tax limit. The state has 3% left, and at any time, they can impose additional taxes. Second, as we have seen with the two measures in the county, they're exempted from the district cap limit. So we could reach a cap limit, and then someone could, some group could successfully appeal to legislature and ask for further exemption, and then that tax would also be applied. And that's actually the second part of the conversation we're seeking direction on this evening, if we should join a lobbying effort to try and limit that. The 0.75% sales tax collection is equal to $215,000 a year.
Do we have anybody else who would like to speak on this item?
Can I just make a comment after city manager England? So in all fairness, though, the, if someone is exempt, or if an entity is exempt, a district is exempt, that doesn't have impact on our local tax that we can draw down if we pass a measure such as, or pass a sales tax such as this. So the, those districts that are exempt, I mean, they could exponentially just charge a whole bunch, and then our sales tax could be crazy for the entire city, but the drawdown for the city is dependent on what we're seeing, or what we're able to do with passing a sales tax if we're able to accomplish it. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And right now, you'll see that the district cap of 2% has already been exceeded. We currently tax at 2.25%. 1% has been exempted already. That could happen in the future, and there are lobbying efforts underway already at the legislature to pass further exemptions for sales tax.
Let's go ahead and finish a public comment, and then we can bring it back for discussion. Did we have anybody else?
Hi, my name is Philip Crabbe. I'm a public affairs manager with the South Coast Air Quality Management District. So I just wanted to, we are, one of the measures that is being referred to here, and I, we are very sensitive to the, basically, the local sales tax cap, and I think that's part of the reason, you know, basically, our focus is on a regional level, but it really impacts the local communities. So in particular, we're focused on, you know, air quality and all the serious health effects and things that have happened from that. Also, climate change is another thing that has been a big issue for us. So first and foremost, yes, our, our sales tax bill would be exempt from the sales tax cap, but we've also made a special effort to make sure that it is not affecting the available tax cap space for cities like Sierra Madre. So it would still preserve that 0.75% that's still available, and that's important to us. One of the things that we're dealing with, though, is something that can only be dealt with at a regional level, and that's basically, you know, the air pollution doesn't respect local borders. So one of the key things is basically, if we were, we have a plan that we're required to do by the federal government, and it basically says you have to reduce, we have some of the unhealthiest air pollution in Southern Califor, in the entire nation in Southern California. And if we are not able to actually solve that problem, we run the risk of federal sanctions, and our next deadline is 2023. That's obviously less than, you know, four years away. If that happens, there'll be potential cutoff for billions of dollars in highway funding, stricter requirements for new businesses coming into areas, also a potential federal takeover that could basically cause more draconian-type measures, which could be no drive-days, businesses need to shut down, things like that. So there's some really serious consequences that could happen if we don't address things. Now, we're focused more on trying to incentivize as opposed to regulation. It's, the severe drops that we need are not going to be allowed within that time. So we wanted to focus on trying to generate that funding. I want to make it clear that this funding would be available both for private and public projects, so cities would likely be a major beneficiary. That includes, you know, basically, things like turning over, deployment of clean vehicles and equipment, zero-emission commuter buses, clean commuter trains, clean school buses, and construction of clean fueling and fueling, electric charging infrastructure on a wide scale that would create more jobs for the local economy. So we have a detailed spending plan that's going to be available within the week. We'd love to be able to provide that information to the council. We also believe that there is a sunset would be appropriate for our tax because incentives for clean technology is not needed on a permanent basis. It really is just to kickstart cleaner technology. So we would just request that this potential decision by the council be maybe postponed so we could provide more information. We'd be happy to continue to work with you all and to provide more information on a going basis. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, yes.
Okay, we'll bring it back to city council. Okay, we'll bring it back to city council. Who has words of wisdom for us?
I'd like to ask if the county in the South Coast Air Quality Management District utilized zero-based budgeting when they go about assigning their annual budgets, because we have and we, we are financially sound. And it's a very troubling thing to me to hear that higher levels of government are talking about imposing taxes when I don't see them using the same kind of standards of, of fiscal evaluation that we've seen work here. So I, that's my first comment. It's probably worth nothing, but I thought I'd throw it in there. My second comment is that, you know, the public expects us to combine a lot of different factors when we try to figure out what the common good is. And the common good is not just raising taxes or lowering taxes. It also takes into account all the, all the things we're trying to do here, all the, all the chainsaws we're trying to juggle at one time when you run a city. And it is certainly true that we're financially sound, but that doesn't mean in the near future, we're not going to have need for new revenues. As a matter of fact, I think if we're going to keep our fire department, I think in the future, we're probably looking at a lot more than $200,000 in new revenues. So I just wanted to get that out on the table. I wanted to hear other discussion before I kind of make a final decision.
Well, I just comments on the AQMD. I don't think that anybody would disagree with the importance of cleaning up the air, especially losing the federal subsidy. So just let's be clear on that, that I, I think you'd be absolutely crazy if you did not value that. I just think doing it on a sales tax is the wrong way to go. What's causing the pollution, you should be taxing. What is causing it? And if you need to do a gas tax or something, that would be a lot more appropriate. But, and it just sounds to me from your comment that you're, you're seeking an exemption, and pretty soon, they keep stacking on the sales tax. It's just, it's already to the point of being ridiculous as high as our sales taxes. So I would encourage the AQMD to tax another way. Do not do a sales tax. That has nothing to do with our issue, because if it's not you, it's still going to be somebody else. So we still have to deal with that. So getting back to the discussion of what we've got in front of us, I just really don't think it's realistic to expect that a citizens initiative is going to happen. And I'd like to hear, you know, if you think it is, how do you think that's going to happen?
So let's, for efficiency's sake, can we take policy question one and policy question two?
Okay.
So policy question one is saying, should Sierra Madre join with other San Gabriel Valley cities in a coordinated effort to lobby the legislature to limit or eliminate, to limit or eliminate further exemptions from the sales tax district cap?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm fine with that as well. I don't know what that looks like, so I don't know if that means we have to spend money or if it's just we're throwing our name behind it. I mean, I'd rather not, kind of, it's kind of a free rider problem. I mean, I think this is going to happen whether or not we spend money on it, so I'd rather not spend a ton of money on it, so.
I think we should spend in proportion to our population. This is where we got messed up before on some of these things. But if we're in with Arcadia, Monrovia, blah, 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 just do it by population, and we pay our fair share. After all, we're not in a financial emergency, and they are.
Officially.
Council member Iris Mindy, how do you feel about this?
So, and I'll share in all transparency, I do sit on SEAQMD Advisory Committee, and so this has been a conversation that I've heard. And I, I think, understanding that to create the district, I was extremely, I still am, that's fine, you know, to, to support that effort, because right now, it's, it's not considered as a district, and so it looks a little bit differently when you're looking at taxing. I, I think the bigger question is the exemption piece to it. And, and now, you know, a lot of it's coming, the dots are connecting when you're looking at, of course, they want to go through an exemption because we're already maxed out, and other entities are going to come in place. So if you're, you know, if you're looking at a region, which I'm sure is most of the region SEAQMD is, is reaching, is that you need that exemption in order to actually collect some of those dollars. So the light bulb went off. But again, you know, I recognize what you're trying to do, and I echo some sentiments here, is it's not about questioning the mission of the work that's trying to be, that is to be done with AQMD. And then the regulations that you are seeing, that we're all seeing from all levels, and how to adhere to that at the state level, at the federal level, and where to get the dollars from it, and who gets, you know, it's punitive at the end of the day, and how does that look? All of that being said, you know, I can appreciate why we'd want to lobby with the other, the other local municipalities, but I am concerned too about the cost that's involved with that and what that would look like. So this is not about an SEAQMD issue. I think we're going to be seeing this from many other districts also, when, when taxes are going to be floating away, because we have, all have all these unfunded mandates that have to be addressed, and how is that going to be done? You know, I don't know what the magic answer to that is.
Councilman Goss?
I'm good with that.
You're good with that? I too think that we have to explore that possibility, but again, we want to make sure that our costs are kept down to a minimum. So would you be able to bring back something for us once you start working with these other?
Certainly, Mayor.
Okay. So, so for policy question one, our answer is yes. Agreed?
Agreed, yeah.
Policy question two, should the city council support a sales tax measure in Sierra Madre in an attempt to eliminate the county permanently foreclosing on the city's ability to collect and retain future sales tax revenues?
I say yes.
Yeah, I think yes as well. And I think that as much as I'd love to see a citizens initiative get us ten or fifteen percent, I just, you know, that, it seems implausible or just infeasible considering how long that would take and, and how many people you would need and the cost that the citizens initiative would need. So, I mean, I'm in favor of trying to explore maybe a citizens initiative with the five percent, with the five percent of the last gubernatorial election. I mean, I think that could potentially get this on, on a special election, so we wouldn't have to wait for the general. And I'm fine, even if it's 200,000, I think that's roughly one year of the new sales tax. So it's a lot of money for the special election, but again, we recoup that in a year if this passes. And I think, my mind is whether it's public safety or whether it's the library, I mean, I think there's going to be, there's going to be a lot of narratives out there, and there's a lot of justification for why we want to keep this money here, you know? And I mean, that's what this is about.
Well, it's about keeping it, or having somebody else.
Or someone else taking it, yeah. So I think, it's a no-brainer to do it. It's just a matter of how to get it on this. To me, it's how to get it on the ballot sooner rather than later, because I think we talked about it before. If we wait till the general, then we're definitely going to be competing with a county measure. And then the question is?
How do you split it up?
How do you split it up, right? So.
Councilmember Goss, what are your thoughts?
Can't really improve on much of what council member Harabedian, or mayor Pro Tem Harabedian said. I don't like to be in a position of recommending tax increases, none of us does, but I do believe that we've been very fiscally responsible in this council, in this government. Mentioned zero-based budgeting before, and I do believe you're right. I think we're, we're basically forced to do this because the money's going to be taken by the county anyway, and this gives us control over that 200,000 dollars that we wouldn't have otherwise. So yes, I will support it.
Councilmember Mindy?
I'd like to think today's discussion was so inspiring for someone in the audience or someone that's watching on television to initiate a citizens initiative in, in collecting signatures. Yeah. So given that, you know, I, I think the last time when we discussed this, we just all thought it was crazy, but we know we have to move forward with it. How it happens, I think, will be of question. I'd like to think that we wouldn't have to go through a special election and, and spend the 200,000 dollars, but that would take will of the people to really get out there and do something. So as a private citizen, I'd love to see how I could help in that manner. But to support it in general, yes. How that happens, I'd like to find the, the way that is quickest and with the least amount of financial impact. And so we have a couple of options here, but we'll have to be moving fast, and we'll have to see if we can mobilize some folks.
So city manager, how many people have been knocking at the door to get behind a citizen?
Knocking the door down. So in, in general, people who have talked about the sales tax measure, it, it comes to them through the other cities that have declared fiscal emergencies, and they're asking about the procedures and why they're going through it. And when we explain kind of the groundwork, they understand it, and they get it, and they support it. No one has yet started an initiative or discussed it with me. They just say they, they support the idea.
So it sounds like we are all in agreement that, yes, we'll have to do some sort of measure. It's just the vehicle that we're going to do that. And if we want to do the five percent to get something in the November, we're really cutting it kind of close, right?
Mayor, the, the timeline is outlined, and it, it is pretty close today. And I also need to stress, city staff can't be involved or advocate in any way for the citizens initiative. So if council decides tonight that is something you're interested in, you'll see staff involvement cease, with the exception of providing factual answers to questions.
I would point out, though, that it is easy for a concerned citizen to borrow a, a ballot measure that was successful in getting passed by another city and copying that and turning it into a citizens initiative.
Where could they find such a model?
My law firm drafted one for Barstow.
Oh, okay.
That was for one percent, and it is, it is a general purpose sales tax.
So if, if a citizen thinks, okay, well, maybe we could get behind this, but they really want to see what an initiative would look like so that they may model after that, would they be able to contact you?
They, they could, yes. It's a public record, and we'd be happy to provide a copy of what that ordinance looks like. It's easy to cut and paste. Beyond that, it's important to.
I'm not seeing anybody out there writing all this information down.
They're all at home writing it down.
Oh, okay.
Beyond that, there are, there are some formatting requirements for placing an ordinance into a citizens initiative. It will require only five percent of the number of votes in the last gubernatorial election, which is a much smaller number, and.
How many, how many signatures is that?
How many is that?
Four hundred and seventy-two?
Yeah, it is four hundred and eight.
Four hundred and eight.
Was it that many? Okay.
Four hundred and eight.
Yeah, and then it, it would need to be brought back to the council in time for, well, if the signature comes in, well, first of all, there's the requirement to submit to the city clerk an intent to circulate such a petition and request a, provide a copy of what that ordinance might look like. And then the city attorney is then required to craft an impartial analysis.
So Mayor, I want to correct that information. I, four hundred and eight is five percent of the total registered voters, and this is saying?
No, no, no. Four hundred and eight is the tot, five percent of the?
Five, we have eight thousand, one hundred some registered voters.
That's right.
Oh.
Yeah.
But this, this is saying if a citizens initiative is proposed, signatures must be gathered equal to the amount of five percent of the number of voters who participated.
Actually voted.
So who, who actually voted. So the number will be lower than four hundred and eight, and I'll correct that information tomorrow and send it to you.
Okay.
Got madam?
It's substantially lower.
Yeah. So just another question, Madam City Attorney, what constraints are on the council as far as helping or assisting?
You, any of you can, in your private lives, without the use of city staff or city resources, can participate in, you can sign such a petition, you can participate in signature gathering. You, you do not set aside your rights as private citizens when you become an elected official.
But we cannot be the citizen who initiates it.
Well, one of you could be, because you're still a private citizen. You just can't use city facilities, the city attorney, but you can certainly take documents that you can find as a matter of public record.
But if a citizen didn't, not on the city council, they could seek out information from you, right?
Yes. Although I'm not allowed to give legal advice, I'm happy to provide whatever help I can, particularly procedural, public record documents.
Okay. So it sounds to me like we're all in agreement that some citizen group is going to collect five percent of the voters in the last gubernatorial election and request a sales tax measure replaced on the ballot for special election and call a special election in November of 2019. Is that we're all agreeing?
Yep.
We all are looking at our crystal ball, and that's what we're seeing?
And it's really only 150 or 200 votes, I mean, if you look at it, it's not a ton.
Gubernatorial?
Yeah.
That's correct. I, I think we had, and Laura may be able to correct me, I think we had around 1,500 votes total. Is that in the last election?
The last election, municipal election, we had just over 2,000, about 2,800 votes.
Yeah, about 3,000.
But that's not the gubernatorial election, which I would have to get those numbers from the county. And that was in last November, I believe.
Can you send that information to us?
And, and to be clear, it's not people who voted in the whole election. It's people who voted for a candidate for a governor.
Interesting.
It's a very small number.
And we, we calculate it that way? We know that number based on?
The county elections division will be able, will have that information.
And if, for some reason, we don't get a citizen group to do this, there is the, the number two, which was to put it on the local sales tax measure on the November 2020, but that's kind of a mute point if we have other tax measures would, which one would be?
My understanding is that if they both pass, you split the capacity. I will have to double-check on that. Another theory is whichever one gets the most votes is the one that counts, but I will need to get back to you on which one. But when we say most votes, you're talking, that's a county-wide issue, so it.
So chances are, they're going to get more votes than Sierra Madre.
Yeah, so I kind of think it's the capacity splitting.
Do we do public comment?
Yeah, we did. Barbara Lee talked.
Did you want to come up?
Well, I thought I already did that. Oh, I'll do it. Yeah, come on, come on down.
Yeah, I thought we did.
We did, okay.
Gary Hood, North Baldwin. If some crazy citizen came forward to get involved in this, is it possible to earmark this tax for, say, like, the fire department?
So, yes, that's, that's possible. It would require two-thirds supermajority for that to pass, whereas a general purpose would be 50 percent plus one. And the general fund is, is essentially here, police, fire, and library and community services.
Okay, thank you.
Look, here's our volunteer.
Just, so if, if some crazy citizen were to want to do this, and they would want to have a petition, what would, what would be the amount of tax that they would want to ask for? You want two percent, five percent? What, what is the amount?
Dot seven five. Point seven five.
Point seven five.
Point seven five is all we can do. Did everybody write that down? Anybody else, any other public comment? So again, I think it was important that what the city manager said is that, that sales tax goes into the general fund, and the general fund is for our police and fire and library and community services, correct?
That's correct, Mayor.
And it would be about 200,000 dollars a year?
215,000 dollars annually, yes.
Or would that 215,000 dollars can go to the county?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay. I just want to make sure everybody understood that.
I know, these mosques.
I know, there's a lot of them. Okay, so it looks like we're going to, if I'm understanding correctly, we're going to wait for that citizen group to collect the signatures? Yes?
I think so.
This is a petition.
I think that's the plan.
And if anybody is interested in that and would like to call any of the city council members for advice or help, please do so.
Please do so.
City manager, if. Um, City Manager, if we have a, a citizen group out there who would like to do this, can they talk to you on the process?
Uh, they, we can answer, uh, yes, factual questions. I would likely refer them to the Assistant City Clerk for dates, timelines, process formatting.
Alrighty. So again, you could, you know, speak to one of us, or go ahead and go to the Assistant City Clerk, and all you people out there in TV land, I'm sure you're all on the phone calling people to get your signatures right now, right?
Phones are ringing.
Phones are ringing. Okay, anything else on this item? Okay. Did you need anything else from us?
Uh, we are all set, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. And that brings us to the end of the meeting. Do we have any future agenda items from anybody? Nope?
Move to adjourn?
On favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.